Welcome to September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mr. President, here.
Here.
And?
Here. Here.
I'm number one. Here. Move the revised agenda, please, counsel.
Move approval of the revised agenda.
If we're sustain pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please continue standing. Like to take a moment of silence for those who are false. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clover.
Mr. Mayor, it is my distinct honor and privilege today to recognize members of the Hazel Park Police Department and the Hazel Park Fire Department that are here on this day in which I requested you to pass a resolution commemorating the events of September eleventh and the heroism that were displayed by the first responders across the United States of America. The outstanding men and women that served in the Hazel Park Departments are truly fantastic examples of dedication, courage, and heroism here at the local level. And as we commemorate those events of nine eleven, it's important for us to honor each and every one of their day for their service to our community.
You may leave.
I may remember coming out and say more. Our city would not be here without the brave men and women, decent men and women that you pay with. And nobody really sees the unsung hero. That's what we all think of as as unsung heroes as residents of the city.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to read you the record of the resolution and I would humbly request a passage by counsel, please. City of Hazel Park, a resolution commemorating September eleventh, two thousand and one. Whereas, on September eleventh, two thousand and one, terrorists launched an Olympic attack against the United States of America, ejecting four civilian aircraft and crashing two airliners into the towers of the World Trade Center in New York City, and crashing a third aircraft into the Pentagon outside of Washington, D.C. And whereas, the fourth hijacked aircraft, white ninety-three, was brought down in southeastern Pennsylvania after passengers bravely attempted to rescue control of the plane through terrorists. Heroic action that earned the United States its first victory in the global conflict against terrorism, and an action that likely saved countless lives and connected important symbols of freedom and democracy in the process. And whereas, the September eleventh, two thousand and one terrorist attacks were the deadliest ever against the United States, going to three thousand people and shocking the world with their savage brutality and cruel targeting of their symbol. And whereas, the death of Brad T. is over, with many firefighters, police officers, military personnel, and other first responders who bravely answered the call of duty that day to protect and rescue the innocent, as well as the many ordinary citizens who courageously stepped forward to help their fellow citizens in the public safety, administering aid, and rescuing those survivors. And whereas, rather than weaken the United States, the attacks of September eleventh served to strengthen the resolve of our country, unleashing a wave of unity and patriotism when it faces further danger and threats. So therefore, be it resolved, the Hazel Parks and Council hereby commemorate the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one. As we honor the memory of the victims of that attack, making them their deepest sympathies to their loved ones, while at the same time, we continue to honor the bravely sacrificed parts of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces, as well as our police officers, firefighters, and other members who are first responder communities who continue to place themselves in harm's in harm's way to protect the people of the United States of America. Thank you all so much for your service.
I'd like to move approval of this of of counsel accepting the resolution. I also want to make a note to really thank our administration for bringing this forward. I did request that we present this today. And I want to also thank all our officers and firefighters that have been here discussing this. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to recognize that Judge Hartwell is also there to help us honor our position.
Support. Attention, more discussion. Resolution passes. We're commemorating September eleventh, two thousand and one. And remembering those armed heroes, our heroes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. I think we should all stand and give these three members a hand of applause. We're coming out, basically showing for everyone to see the continuance of bravery and the resolve that are evident here at the local level. The future of our city, or the past of our city, I think is looking forward is is the goal we are. Clover?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and thank you all. Uh, we have another special presentation today for Mr. Omar Osborne. I believe James Osborne. And I believe uh, James is here to accept this award on behalf of his father's service. Okay, I would like to step up to the podium, please. Mr. Mayor, would you would you like me to read the resolution? And you can present Mr. Osborne with the resolution to commemorate his father's service. Uh, City of Hazel Park proclamation honoring former council member Omar Osborne. Whereas, the mayor and council of the City of Hazel Park hereby recognize longtime resident and former council member Omar Osborne, who passed away in two thousand and ten. And whereas, having received the highest number of votes, Mr. Osborne was elected to the Hazel Park City Council in April of nineteen seventy and currently the mayor of this city. And whereas, at his inaugural meeting, he stated what an honor and privilege it was to serve inviting residents to contact him with sufficient confidence in all senior employees. And whereas, he continued to serve in the city council since of June nineteen seventy-three, at which time he resigned and was run from there. And whereas, in his private life, Mr. Osborne was a husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather and a lifetime member of the Hazel Park Sonic Lodge, and his entire following career general motive. And whereas, Mr. Osborne has even said to have originated the idea of the hazelnut logo for Hazel Park. Now, therefore being known on this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-one, the mayor and council hereby recognize Omar Osborne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I would request that City Council is into exacting the session.
Will you have Judge Hartwell?
Uh, absolutely. Mr. Hartwell, would you like anything to address the council?
Yes, of course. Good evening, Mayor Webb, as members of the City Council. Officers from our police department and fire department. Um, thank you for our remembering nine eleven. Today, I had the privilege of swearing in two new police officers. And uh, in my remarks, we assembled a police officers. One of the police officers brought his father. I made a promise that he, the council will keep, I promise the officers and their family that we'll keep them safe. I promised them that the community of Hazel Park loves and respects the police officer. And I see every day the hard work that our police officers do. So um, we talked about nine eleven, how that inspired so many men and women in America to take up arms to defend our freedoms. And uh, so I I didn't assume that why they joined the police force is the same, but there are the same characteristics inside their heart, right? They're willing to run into danger, protect other people. Uh, they're willing to sacrifice their comfort working midnight shifts so they can protect us, you, your neighbors, your households. Um, and I know the the members in the public here have never seen the police officers in action, but I have. It's a remarkable group of people. And uh, the city of Hazel Park just became two really solid, morally strong people today. Mr. Mayor, please fulfill the promises I gave them to keep them safe and well-trained the firemen. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Judge.
Thank you for everything you did for us.
I think they wanted to elaborate a little bit on how much work our officers do and our firefighters. We go back to two thousand and two, Justin Nigro Wilson on the phone. Our own local community. It all hit us hard. That was the announcement at the time. This Clover show was just on, just got on the city manager. We hope it was at the hospital at the time. They got the call, our stomach was shot. And you look at how many officers have fallen in the last few years. Look at how many firemen have fallen. You start to wonder, where is our society going? Do we have more peace and love in our hearts to make a better future for our children? That's what we all have to strive to do. An officer comes to you or a fireman comes to you on your worst day of your life. Usually, you're not prepared, scared, or you're trying to, even if you're committing a crime, the officer hits you or talks to you, maybe they can be a mentor to you if you were to listen up straight on your life. As several friends of mine, as growing up, had crossed the law. And actually, one of them is a county deputy to this day. Many years ago. He's probably retired by now, almost or close to it. But uh, he had crossed the law as well. But he got his, I thought it was met here in his future. You don't have to go down those paths. And that's what I must say to young people today, that everybody can help someone else. And that peace and love is come out of everyone to make a better life for all of us and make it better for our children, not for you. Thank you.
If you make a vote, have a motion to go to exec session. Your Honor, I know that we entered into exec session.
Support. Be back momentarily.
Discussing the closed session.
Attention. I says. Opens up to civic announcements. Want for the audience having civic announcements? Civic announcements? Other discussion will be next. Unless it's a a community event or something you want to come up and talk about. You know, the announcements for the public, civic announcements from the council. You have the fire, from the fire department open house. Sunday, October seventeenth, from eleven AM to one PM. Uh, sire donuts, fire truck display, try on fire gear, fire safety demonstration, bounce house, spray the hose, free balloon, extraction demonstration. I'll tell you if you want. Uh, wire department t-shirts on sale. Sure to chief of someone, uh, hid inside one of you. I'm just kidding. But uh, it's a great time for the kids to have a good time, they enjoy themselves. There's a lot of young kids there. Firemen are so great, gracious enough to host this every year. It's a great kind of show, the fire scene. Thank you.
One of the crazy ones I you guys do is that, uh, you got oil burning all went out of pan and you try to, I mean, it's
I mean, it's a council bar, it's a bomb. That's really surprising how it can happen. And maybe these assistants can get hateful out. Anybody else have any civic announcements? Open the public discussion. Now we got anybody who wants to speak. If you have one, I will go ahead and we'll get Sandy. Ma. Ma, you're first, and then we have someone who's filled out a thing, we'll take that.
Hi guys.
Adra, name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Jan Applevichus, I actually live in West Rome Field, Michigan. I have many family members and friends who reside at our farm. I'm also the founding member of Decriminalize Hazel Park. We are here to propose, beginning if it's not decided today, a resolution to decriminalize anti-aging plants and fungi for adult use. Because we see medicinal value in botanical plants. I, for example, was diagnosed with major depression in postpartum in twenty seventeen. Got to the point where I didn't leave my house for about six months, and I was forty to sixty pounds heavier than I am. I went to traditional medical, I went first, I went to my psychologist, I went to my therapist, and it ended up prescribing me almost a half dozen prescription pills. Unfortunately, the more prescriptions I received, the less effective these medicines seemed. I started to feel like a shell of myself, almost like a robot. Almost after a year of trying different prescriptions to no avail, my husband approached me and suggested giving natural remedy. That's when I discovered the ability to use psilocybin in my couple of those forms to combat anxiety and depression. Don Hopkins University did a recent study in November twenty twenty, between twenty four participants, they were given two doses of psilocybin within a four week period. Seventy one percent of those patients described that their depression symptoms had subsided at least fifty percent, meaning the treatment was effective. I know too well because I'm one of those people, microdosing worked for me. The city of Ann Arbor decriminalized indigenous plants and fungi almost one year ago this month. Erginor Rosschel County prosecutor Eli Saban said he will not prosecute for antigens. It was also announced this month that Senator Jeff Irwin and Adam Hallier are sponsoring Bill six three one, which exempts people from criminal penalties for possession of antigens. All we're asking for today is people to be allowed to treat themselves using plant medicines without the fear of going to jail. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I work at home full time. This medicine works for me and every day I'm scared to death that I can fail simply for using this medicine to do my stuff. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sandy Krueger. One three one three East Yarbus. Somebody's doggy.
I know.
I'm here just to give a report from Hazel Park neighborhood enrichment. We had recently had a garage sale, and it was somewhat successful, but not near as successful as the one we have in spring. We had it twice a year. So, we may or may not have a follow on in the future, we need to discuss that. Also, we've handed out all summer long beautification awards, and. We had a teens, teens, or teens had two or three signs apiece. Pass out and put out people's lawns or business units. Months a week, they get to keep the award for a week and then we pick it up and give it to somebody else to match it. So, we each took a section of town, so. So, we plan on continuing that. Also, we have our Halloween awards coming up. I know it's, you've given a, like, you've given an award out. And ours is different because, again, we send out teams around the city to pick out two houses a week. Who has become spooked, thank you. And we have, we pick out houses that we like how they decorate, and they get, we keep the award for a week, and then we, next week, somebody else gets a turn, so. So anyways, that's, that's what we've been up to. So, you have any questions, or?
Very real quick. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion who'd like to come up?
Hello, my name is Lex, I'm a member of the Hazel Park community, I'm happily found everyone I currently live and born. I'm also a member of Decriminalize Nature. I haven't been in the area for very long, since about two thousand and sixteen, but I've been incredibly amazed with the diverse communities that we have all gathered here. I'm originally from Sweden, and more specifically, my family lives southern Sunday, which is one of the indigenous groups in Finland, Norway, Sweden, and Russia. If you've never heard of us, I'm not surprised, but I'm sure you've heard some of our stories, and I think the most well known is probably How Santa Fe Rode to Fly. And the answer is at the agentic plants, Emily the Mushroom, she is there. A plethora of agentic plants, like mushrooms, nightshades, henbane, bilberry, crowberry. Have been celebrated for centuries for their medicinal properties and their spiritual ways all throughout indigenous cultures all over the world. Many of which have members that live in five year around Hazel Park. Now, Sweden and Michigan are very different places, but one of the things that brought me peace, when I felt the most homesick. Has been walking around the community and seeing how many plants grow both in Sunday and Hazel Park. And a lot of the plants that you see in both places are the agentic plants that we discussed here today. But the way they're facing criminal charges for participating in our own traditional medicine and refueling from the plants that grow in our backgrounds here naturally. And the way that class for us sufferers must feel wanting desperately to reconnect to their identity culture plays very hardly on the part. Agentic plants have helped me grow as a person, and the science is finally starting to back up what indigenous orchard has been saying for centuries, which is that. These plants do help people, and the existence significant, and the roles have. As the state of Michigan begins to discuss the decriminalization of agentic plants, I hope to see Hazel Park leading the way along with Ann Arbor. In decriminalizing agentic plants in Bongrile, thanks to helping the indigenous community members feel more seen and more welcome in an already incredible diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Morgan Myers, I live in New York, and I live on Main Street in Hazel Park. I support the decriminalization of pathogens and fungi, not only because I live within the city, but because I've also had profound experiences with suicide emotions. I suffered from postpartum depression with, after both of my children. I had my daughter in twenty seventeen, and my son in twenty nineteen. During that period, I completely lost myself, I didn't know who I was anymore, I didn't know how to take care of my family, I would brush my hair, do the dishes, things that normal people take for granted. I couldn't even create my art anymore, and I'm an artist, so that was really hard. I took traditional SSRIs, I had Zoloft and a few others, and had very little success. My husband noticed it, everybody else around me noticed it, I was pretty much a ghost, and not myself at all. When my friend introduced me to the effects of suicide and depression. I tapered off with my SSRIs and started microdosing schedule, and within six weeks, I felt a lot better. But after about a year, I was almost completely back to who my friends remembered me as. I was able to take care of my family better than I ever could before, and. I am doing much better, I'm able to create art again. So I sincerely pledge my support for the decriminalization of antigens and fungi.
Thank you.
My name is Andy, I live on four thirty one West Mexico. I'm just here to add my support for the decriminalization of suicide motions. Even short, I've come off of two prescriptions, and then I started microdosing and working on them, they've changed my life in a lot of ways. Thank you.
Any lines for questions? It's a little discussion, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I would encourage the members of this organization, if you have any information, to email it to our city clerk's office, and we'll take a look at it. And begin the process of studying it. I want to thank you all for coming here and sharing some very personal story with us, and we do take seriously, I know I speak for the mayor and council, we take seriously. Everyone who comes before us with an issue like this, and it's something that I'm sure we'll watch study in some bigger detail. We'll just forward that information, and we'll leave you on that. But I also want you to know, you have a little prosecutor right here, I don't think you have a prosecutor anymore. I don't know anymore. So, you know. You can go home and not worry about that. It's not.
Should drive.
Yeah, like, you don't want to drive around with your influence or something.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It takes us to the consistent agenda of one through seventeen. Your honor, I know adoption of agenda items, one through seventeen, support. Session. Session. Motion of assets, and one of C, three months here from two two six five five South Bracey Drive, S and C Realty. Slices approved, two four three one zero John R, Thomas Hospitality Group Inc., Commercial Real Estate Services. Business sections were approved. Also, the approval of the emergency sanitary sewer lines was approved, so we are. As, as some cities have gotten a bit rough for not being careful of their sewers and water systems, we are, we are very quiet. And we do our part in making sure that our residents do not have, you know, a flood situation, if at all possible. And thank you, Tim. It takes us to administrative reports. And one resolution dash zero nine dash zero one eight dash two one, and new Hazel Park Social District application.
Mr. Mayor, the city of Hazel Park, this process is the foundational document that is getting processed. Mr. Campbell is here to investigate and put into detail if anyone has questions regarding this. Folks at home, this is a thing that came out during COVID, from the state of Michigan, making your left social features, and taking walk down. In certain public areas designated by the city council with oozes in a. I have a cup that has signage in certain designated limits. It's, it's basically an opportunity to stand on a sidewalk with something. It's not going to harm anything, there's not going to be a lot of walking back and forth, it's my assumption. But at the same time, it is also a good marketing tool, to develop this air bill before it's coming to a foot. Is not legalized walking around here in the year where bottles of alcohol are not.
Speak closer, can you hear it? Yeah. Can you clarify though, that it's not legalized where people can just walk down the street with bottled alcohol? Right, it must be in the cup designated from one of the establishments. You can't walk into another establishment carrying the same cup. There are strict rules, the rules will be posted everywhere, it's going to require some signage and some condition, as Council of Mondo pointed out. Garbage cans intersecting bins at certain designated locations. It's not going to be a huge overhead, but there will be some costs.
That's how many have been done, is the cups not.
No, you can't. And the cup will have the designated logo on it, things of that nature. This exists in, exists in Ferndale, exists in Oak Park, exists in Luddington.
Like Luddington?
Yep, there's numerous communities throughout that area.
Thank you very much.
Can we, can we see about maybe making those cups biodegradable and other research?
Sure, sure, we can, I mean, look, I also want to say this is just the start of this process, so basically. Yeah, yeah, no, no, absolutely, I don't, yeah. So I will look at materials and things of that nature also, we don't even have the participating. Yeah, exactly, so, we'll see, we'll see when we get to that point, I will look into that, see if that's people and rates up. All right.
Your honor, I'd like to thank Jeff and the city administration for addressing my concerns, particularly disposal of the cup. And I'd like to move adoption of resolution oh nine dash zero one eight dash two one, create a Hazel Park Social. Support, or a discussion. Any more discussion?
I just, I want to point out that Ferndale did this during the pandemic, and it was very successful, people were a little nervous about how it would go. I drive through Ferndale literally twenty times a day at all hours of the day. And it's been really successful there, and it wasn't nearly as kind of raucous as everybody kind of just might be. And I feel Hazel Park, as we're building our downtown, this is such a great draw to our community, and it really benefits. The businesses that are already here, but also ones that are rookies come here, so, thanks for bringing it forward.
I think also most of our doubts are pretty reasonable or responsible. It did also boost the following of certain Facebook, cities Facebook by a level, so, it is, yeah, yeah.
Then two, ordinance entitled nine, peace, public peace, morals and welfare, chapter nine. Four parental responsibility for streaming. Which we're updating.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an update to our parental responsibility ordinance, this ordinance has been requested by our police department for some time, it has been. This, like, the next ordinance you will be considering has been worked on by our city attorney's office for a period of months, and we are pleased to bring it forward. If you have any questions, the court is here to answer them, as is our chief reports. Administration, respect for requests of.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Title Nine, Public Peace and Morals and Welfare, Chapter nine point eight four. Parental responsibility on first reading. Hey, anybody have any questions for the human office, or you want to? Get some, you have any changes you want to make into the administration, or questions, they'll let me. Question, any suggestion?
I just have a question. I am wondering what, can we get a brief, like, I read through all of this. And I just want a better oversight from the legal portion, because I'm coming at it from a non-parent, non-legal person. How this changes. What this changes, or how this changes our officers' ability to intervene, or to, who this affects them on, is what my question is.
Well, I think most importantly is the conduct on school property. That was a huge issue with cigarettes and smoking and students vaping and that. So that was the number one consideration, was the ability to protect the students while they're on school property. And hold someone accountable if they're coming to school with products that they ought not have as minors. So that was an important consideration that was addressed with our.
Does it, does it, but doesn't the state of Michigan already cover this?
This, this here was in ordinance to expand what we already are doing in Title Nine. We did not have this contained within, and in addition, we were able to set forth in better understanding and clarity for direction and instruction. And it's, it will be posted and made upon approval of the council, and this will be very, very helpful for parents to understand the criminalism law.
There, there are state laws, obviously, that cover this, it's not. Now, get someone interested in prosecuting that law, kind of like here, this gives us a little.
This leads to ticketing or prosecution?
Yes.
Oh, well, yes, maybe, yes.
Oh, well, yes, maybe, yes. And they're all assessed on an individual case-by-case basis, can you suggest?
And a lot of this has been done through our liaison officer with the school district, so there's, there's different avenues. It's already been, a lot of times when they go through the school district, it's already been involved, then the liaison officer's been involved. Then, then this is a prosecutor or other than, you know, it's usually been two or three times hammered out.
The liaison officer, correct, the liaison officer was involved heavily.
That's very heavily, that's very difficult, okay?
And has been requesting it for.
Did one years ago, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it's.
No, and when they do go up, as Mr. Obergeiss said, when it's being requested to the county, different counties handle things different ways and depending on their work, they may reject a case today and take a case tomorrow. So this will also keep some consistency of enforcement, which will be very, very helpful.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Thank you for answering my question.
Session, um, motion passes on first reading. Ordinance to amend Title VI, Chapter VI, point zero, four, animals first reading.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, speaking of ordinances that have taken some time to be drafted. This one has been in the works for some period of time. Councilmember Melissa Sullivan has been working on this for over a year with Melissa Schwartz and with Jennifer Thomas. Our animal control officer will bring these to first reading. Our previous animal ordinance was six pages. This one is twenty pages, single site, single space type. But it's very comprehensive and it's not repetitive, but I think for a reason that it's some pretty good defensive guidance on certain things. So this, and I will let member Sullivan or Attorney Schwartz address it in greater detail. And I think that the purpose of this, to protect the people of the city of Hazel Park and to protect animals in the city of Hazel Park itself. So the administration, respectful requests, this has been passed on first reading.
Do you want to talk about this ordinance before I?
Get a motion sort of.
Absolutely. Let's make a motion to pass on first reading the ordinance to amend Title VI, Chapter six, point oh, four, ordinance.
Okay, open for discussion.
Well, I just wanted to thank the city administration for really honoring my incessant calls for these updates. It has been a relentless purpose of mine and like singular vision of mine to get our animal ordinances updated. Coming from the volunteer and advocacy background that I have. In, in all honesty, for neighborhoods, start with safer animals. If you have ordinances in place where there could be intervention before there's crisis, prevention is absolutely your best tool in the toolbox. And this, this update about ordinances, many of which have happened, updated since the forties when our city was incorporated, and many others since the seventies, that's fifty years ago. The amount of knowledge and learning and science and fact-based information regarding best practices for animal safety and animal ordinances has just, the plethora of information that is available now is not what it was when these, when our current ones were adopted fifteen plus years ago. City Attorney Melissa Schwartz and Animal Protection Officer Jennifer Thomas have been incredibly diligent in, you know, writing out every single comma and dash and space and intent and intention of these ordinances. And I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity to work with them on this. And I hope this, you know, a safer community and gives our animal protection officers more resources to really intervene before things get dangerous for people. And I think this is one of the assets to our community and is going to continue to keep our community safe as we grow. Dabbled, sorry.
I wanted to thank Councilmember Sullivan as well for the opportunity to work on this interesting and important project. And I really enjoyed working with Animal Control Officer Jennifer Thomas. She was just an outstanding resource and making herself available for nights and weekends, which is often where we have to work on this with our other responsibilities here at the city. So this has definitely been a very important labor of love for many of us who love our city, but also love the animals that are within our city as well. So I'd like to, once again, just thank you for the opportunity to work on this one.
More discussion? Session? It takes us to the first, no cause hearing, five, one, five, East George.
Mr. Finch, could you briefly explain to the mayor and council the status of I-15 East George? It, it's a, this property is basically, is in stage of removal required. Attorney Officer did order. Basically, there's rear addition on it and it's literally, literally kicking in, structurally ready. All the, being the building is dangerous. You do not want to go into the building. Horns collapsing and my understanding is the owner of the property is planning on, he owns the property and planning to build a new structure. He understands, he was told that this was happening this evening, this meeting. And he said, go forward with it because he was waiting on his, basically his disconnected documentation from medicine and consumers and so on, in order to issue a permit to demolish this. We just want to get it on, on the record that the city council has ordered it to be demolished and hopefully this person who owns the property steps forward here shortly. As a proper documentation, so we can issue a permit to go forward and the property removed.
At this time, I'd like to open up other hearing for five, one, five, East George. Anyone here representing five, one, five, East George, please step up. Say no one to close the public hearing, five, one, five, East George.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends that this property be demolished and that the individual bring documentation to the city of Hazel Park within the next, the owner bring documentations to the Hazel Park within the next thirty days, proving that he has contracted with a demolition company for the demolition of this house. If he fails to do so, I request as part of the motion, council authorize the administration to see the demolition of this property proceed. Of course.
Do we know how long this investment company owns this property?
I don't know. It's that.
I have a question as well. Since there isn't actual owner of this property, if the city demos it, then, then what happens?
Then the cost of that demolition will be assessed to that property.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure. Thank you.
Oh, theoretically, the taxpayers will not have to pay for this? We will have to pay for it.
That is my biggest concern.
Councilmember McCall, there is a warrant deed and it states that that was filed with the county on April fifteenth, twenty-one. The building code department had given numerous opportunities, almost on a monthly basis, of notice. And then the hearing officer in July entered the order for it to be demoed by August fourteenth, I can leave it as due to the serious nature of the structure and how dangerous it is to even, you can't go in there. But it's just been sitting there now for months and the owners know that it's in this very serious and dangerous condition.
I, I just, with the city manager on letting this person at demolition themselves, we've had past experience problems with.
I'm fine. You're not hurting my feelings ordering the demolition and we'll see bids right away. You're not hurting my feelings a bit.
I just.
I support your, oh, wait.
I think we look forward to the record.
We're just trying to. Go with what the building department said, so I'm, so it's up to you. I'm happy, happy, happy to make that motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to request first, seek demolition within thirty days for the property at five, one, five, East George.
More discussion? Session? Five, oh, seven, East Aids. Is there? I'd like to hear from Mr. Finch on this property. Then we will open up our public hearing.
Yes, Roger, can you come briefly, city council, please, briefly explain why, what your, what the status of this building is and what your recommendations are and why? Although the building is non-conforming, it is still up to you to move and remove. It's basically three hundred fifty-seven square feet, which is even the size of a two-car garage. And it simply hasn't had any maintenance or anything to the property for quite some time. I do believe, I believe the former experience of seeing somebody remove it, you may have something to refer. My understanding was the owner at the time when we were out there, she had, had something involved with somebody wanting to purchase the property and go forward with demolishing the structure. So for now, time-wise, we probably, again, going into that direction, which the previous property was, was have arced and had basically put up with it and never taken down. I remember that's, that's bottom line.
At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for five, oh, seven, East Aids. If there's anyone representing five, oh, seven, East Aids, please step up. Or if anyone has any comments. Please, what is your name and address, record?
Barbara Meissen. I lived at five, oh, seven, East Aids, now I'm in charge. We've been trying to sell it for quite a while. And we have, we accepted our purchase agreement, but we haven't closed on it. My realtor put forward a freedom of disclamation letter, which he has not gotten back yet. And I guess the title company does that also. I don't know. But they're both waiting to get those back before we can move ahead. The guy that's buying it is going to demolish.
When was the purchase agreement that signed? How long ago?
You have a copy of that purchase agreement with you?
Well, approximately, was it a month ago or was it five months ago?
Oh, no, not five months. Maybe less than a month. That's the truth, because we were going back and forth on prices.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak on this one? Was it a public hearing? Mr. Mayor, the administration behind the rock engage.
Do we know, demolition, city orders it demoed? Will that affect any sort of purchase agreement or anything like that?
It could, it may or it may not. Again, this has to come down no matter what, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I totally agree. And I don't want it sitting there for a long time. It will take.
Absolutely. And we don't know, you know, if he takes possession of this property tomorrow, we don't know. You know, we've heard the owner say he plans to demolish it. We have nothing, again, we have no appetite, we have, we have nothing. So I think it's in the best interest of community to protect the park. Sort of demolition. We'll say, some of these pictures, like, you know, I know the house is in bad shape, you're not living there anymore. But you are the owner. This is really looks terrible. All this stuff here. I mean, you gotta, I mean, you're, you're really lucky I'm not just handing you a ticket right now and serving it to you while you're sitting. Because if this looks like this, if I were to drive by it, this is, this is just terrible.
Or live by it.
What's that?
Or live by it.
Or live by it, oh my god. Yeah, you're, like I said, this is really, this is terrible. It's not just housing just dilapidated, which it is, but all this drunken debris here is terrible. Again, administration.
Also, it's very important to note that this has been coming up as a repeated issue. And this is a dilapidated, non-conforming structure with the building actually collapsing as well. So it too poses immediate threat to the public health, safety and welfare. And this also was before the hearing officer left in July, it was ordered demoed before August fourteenth as well. So even before we came to this process, it has gone through city procedures and they're just absolutely exhausted and now it's just so dangerous. It would be really prudent for this to come down as soon as possible.
It's not clamped. I mean, I, I don't get that.
Your Honor, it appears as though the conclusion is inevitable. This property is going to have to be demolished. Really a question of how we arrived there. So I move based upon the findings of the building, official dilapidation, non-conformance and a cost exceedance of value, and it's present dilapidated condition. Substantial repairs are required and the hearing officer's order dated December fourteenth, twenty-one, to demolish the house within thirty days. Look at it, five, oh, seven, East George. Support.
More discussion?
I have something I want to say. I believe the administration can confirm this, that the city's bid process and the way we've done it, we usually will get better demo costs than any normal.
We usually will. I can't promise that.
No, but we have seen it.
And the, and the demo of this does not remove her ownership of the property.
It does not. We will pursue the demolition and the cost of that demolition will be assessed to the court.
I met Ms. Meiser many, many years ago, a very kind lady. We had lovely discussions in her once beautiful garden. So very sad, it's on the show, hot hearing. Today I actually drove by. And it made my heart hurt, but I'm glad to know that you're okay and that you're safe. I want to thank you for coming and. I'm sorry that we're at this level, but I hope there's some good resolution out of this. Yeah, and actually, I agree with Attorney Schwartz, who just said that if this property is already demolished, it might make it easier sell because of the fact that the city can get a better cost for demo than the private contract.
More discussion? One discussion I have is neighbors of Cincinnati, if you're on it, if you're. It's gonna, it's gonna take a while.
Now, that's something you have to don't do at a cost. So if you want to get it cleaned up.
I'm seventy-two years old.
I, I mean, I didn't say you would clean it yourself. Get it cleaned up.
There, session. Where's the commissions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
They want us to take the action.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the administration, respectful request, the appointments of John J. Carcelle and Leighton Alexander Watson. Jeff Campbell and I have interviewed both of these individuals. Stellar resumes and are in the qualified to sit. Mr. Watson serves also on the Executive Official Commission. Commission is an attorney. He's currently working in the United States District Court. And Big Carcelle is a planner and he works with the Wayne County Band-Aid Corporation, so.
What should we do then?
Your Honor, I move that we appoint Leighton Alexander Watson and John J. Carcelle to the finding. Your honor, I move that we appoint Leighton Alexander Watson and John Jake Arsell to the finding commission. We would be extremely lucky to have the deputy director of the Wayne County Land Bank, an organization that I work with relatively frequently, while as a Harvard educated lawyer to uh enter the service.
Support. Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint April Beaton Alexandria Alexandra uh Anita. Uh Gavin Burns, Charles Lissay, Jeffrey Olivier, Sarah Pitchford, Marcel Lloyd and Nicole White, all to the beautification commission.
Any second? Support. Yes.
Okay. No one?
Okay. Okay, yes. I was putting as quick as I can.
I'll bring it in. Okay, we got that? Any session? It passes. The people, as on your personal recreation of the specializer report.
Well, let me speak with Sonny, no, he'll be.
We are taking two new business, anyone have any new business beside five seventy five?
I actually was contacted by the DTE represented via email before the meeting, so I'm excited to meet him. You know, uh city and I think you guys informed us that what this is.
Make sure you ask her about her email that she said she responded to.
Yeah, I think she wants to do a zoom meeting instead, and remember we have no, you know, way to compel them and uh. You know. Well, yeah, I think we've already done that. I I think that we've already done that and I think that's what triggered it, generating, you know, generating this uh this fall, so I she was on the air chain and I'm sure she's following. This lives locally, not here in Hazel Park, but in the daywood community, I'm sure she's been following our social media. But I think that's kind of what uh triggered that. Now she herself was a nice lady and remember she is simply uh the public face, she's not really what you would call a citizen. Uh, but she does need to listen to our concerns and DTE needs to do a better job of trimming the trees. And uh I have a long record of contacting uh her predecessor on my fall and I can go back ten years at least where I'm screaming about we need better and more effective tree trimming in the city of Hazel Park. And by DTE's own admission, more than ninety five percent of all power outages are a result of trees falling on or trees falling on wires, so.
Remember that they also mentioned about equipment.
Sure.
For parks.
We we have, we have, uh, there are basically three circuits that primarily serve the Hazel Park. And two of those circuits are having far higher than normal number of power outages uh here in our community. So tree trimming and equipment maintenance both need to be uh addressed by DTE. So I'll keep you guys uh uh informed of what we've come up with for dates. So I checked the car, just got the email before we started today.
Um, another thing to keep in mind with that tree trimming um that we're pushing is appropriate tree trimming. Um, because inappropriate tree trimming can cause more problems than than just trimming the trees, so.
Get the whole tree off.
Like, well, like, no, like currently, right now, um, they are trimming, in front of all their trimming oak trees. Live oak trees they are trimming, which exposes them to the ash core and exposes them to um major diseases, which means then the property owner is going to have a dangerous tree, not just ones near power lines, but a dangerous tree on their property. And that is unacceptable. Our community cannot push one problem out of the way to create another, so that's something I really want us to be aware of when we discuss things with them.
I have to, I have to say it's publicly though. We have to be careful about that. Because that's going to be their number one, that's always their number one excuse. Well, you know, we'd like to do more tree trimming, but we don't give the community that complaint. So this is all that we can do. So it ends up with a situation where it's determined inadequate, so we need to be uh really need to pin them down. If they're gonna have to do it, then they need to, you know, if they have a tree and that tree is dangerous, that tree is gonna go on the wires, they're gonna need to move the tree and replace it or something.
There are very easy solutions to trimming oaks and that is wait till fall or seal the trim within thirty minutes. That's it. Those are super easy solutions. So they can trim away, but they have to do it either in the appropriate time of year when the trees are dormant, when they need to seal it. And we we should push for that, like we need to be ahead of that, that's what I'm saying.
Because they always, they always complain about. But this is the new test, and it should not be.
Shouldn't, they shouldn't dissuade the process.
This should efficiently bring the process.
No.
One bit.
But we need to be adamant about it.
You can still trim those trees, you can still trim them back sufficiently, five feet instead of three, which is what they need to do. And then, so, okay.
And we're coming up on fall too, so it's getting close to the time when they would normally be trimmed and let it stay.
I want to make a question, but I mean, we have a question, because now I know that some oxygen tree wasn't aware, so now I have. Would they raise that issue? So we can just sue that guy.
Thanks for having a call, Steve.
Well, once they get, once they get all the trees trimmed or if they infected. The other issue too, it means unfortunately where a weed tree grow up in the fence line, it takes over the poles or takes over the lines. And that's some issue too.
Look, and again, that's something the residents need to take the initiative out of themselves.
A lot of residents do, but you have those, of course, everything, like you have that minor few.
That's.
It doesn't matter, that, you know, it's nature, right? It's ours.
Yeah, I went and I trimmed mine back, it should have been behind my house. And uh I had a rake and I was pulling the branches that I couldn't reach over from my neighbor's truck that was growing up. I was cutting those too, and there was this one branch that I couldn't reach. And then I went out there and my neighbor cut, he went out there and cut whole whole branch. So he saw what I was trying to do, so he cut everything I couldn't reach, he cut. So that was really cool. So if everybody would do that, we'd have a lot less problems with the trees in uh lines. But we've got some, I've seen some, like, they've gone into the backyard, so. Unblewued mess, branches and trees wrapped with it and wired it to the other team. There's some of them, hey, the professional group would need that. Just.
And the other thing I want to bring up is the uh, we've, you said we were talking to Art and Rouse about how in the state of Michigan, about how we're gonna lay out this bridge from John R. to the two, the narrow part of John R. Sixty bridges, the most costly. The type I turn around, ready self, you know, oh, I think it's a little overkill, I don't know how that's gonna merge in with that.
And we had a meeting on that, Jeff and I did with uh with Hennessy and with uh Tom. And we're gonna take a look at different things and bringing back some recommendations. That's one of the things we tasked them to take a look at. So we're gonna, I think we're gonna push over to our secondary engineers, Hennessy, and have them look at that. I think they're, they're the better ones, they're the ones who uh got the grant for us to some kind of give the bike lanes, I think they're probably a little better to look at this, uh see how we can best still fit uh as much of a light lane speedman as possible, given this you know, mess that uh.
We created, we created this mess and even if it was four lanes, it still wouldn't work.
It it's not good, it's a bad thing.
Not great without.
It's not good.
Not safe.
That's all. It's gonna cause a lot, even when you pay up for enough.
So we're gonna have people who are, I think, uh better experts on this thing, plus they can look at this and see what they can come up with to create the safest uh potential possible situation there, while still still trying to maintain as much life lanes possible.
And one more thing. What we're doing, we're gonna get this straight.
Uh, we're doing some more, we're doing some more paving and then we're starting.
Oh, so I had a question raised and. Hi, is that only by a couple of hours?
We had that, had that discussion as well.
I tried to hang that discussion the other day, but the minute, the minute there's a drop of rain, that paint is gone, you can't see it at all.
I've seen people cross over the medium in, like, drive down the earth.
No, it's uh, we'll, we're we're on that, that actually is also a topic. It's part of that meeting. I do like it when we're already on top of things you guys bringing up, so.
No, it just.
That's, it's, it's cool that we are, right?
It's a good reminder.
It is.
How did you even talk about those, like, about those, uh, strikes on the right?
Hey, I live three hours, yeah, but that's all.
Okay, one more thing. Since we're talking about these. Um, I've seen a lot of people moving their campers in their driveways or moving friends or relatives in their driveways in campers. Uh, since we're in, I like to see with horses. I know people are having hard times sometimes, but you can find a room in a basement or a house and rent it as well.
But we will, we will allow, just obviously if you have friends from out of town or something. And they're parked in a camper, we're not, you know, we're giving them. I just. We have people who are living. God, you can't do that, that's a hard job.
It's better than how you store them too, so please remember not to be parking these things in your lawn, your neighbor's lawn, on the city uh property.
Usually give people a week to say to park it on the street or whatever to clean it out. You know, sometimes you're on vacation, you come back, well, to clean off, we take, put it back in storage and it's understandable.
Yeah, you you can't be living in a trailer in your driveway.
There's a few places.
Friends cannot be living in a trailer in your driveway. If they're off in Tennessee for a week, hey, that's one thing. But if all of a sudden your friends, your family's in Tennessee, if you're, you know, three months later, you're living in a trailer, you have to move it. And all trailers need to be stored to the rear of the home. So trailers should not be extending uh pass upon that. Okay?
Thank you. This is communications department heads, department heads switching the speech. Step forward.
Did you see how that fire chief vaulted that uh queue in a single bound?
Thanks for the kind words tonight, very heartfelt. Hope you're served and we will continue to serve no matter what.
Um, evening, mayor and council, uh we recently received an exhaust grant. Got sixty five thousand dollars. We have to match five percent or. Um, Tony Galati, one of my firefighters, was the spearhead behind this, he's had two grants now. He got the uh S C B A grant over two years ago for a hundred and thirty thousand, that's done by him also, so. Uh, we're currently going through the uh uh three bid phase right now, so we'll get some prices to you guys to go over at one point um in the very near future, and then hopefully before winter, we'll see some activity in the building, update the twenty six year old system we have.
You explain what it is.
Uh, it's a catran exhaust system, it hooks to the tailpipe of the vehicles in our building. Um, it follow, once you start the vehicle, the machine has a coded box on it that reads the vehicle started. Starts a vacuum machine on the roof of the building, sucking the exhaust out of the building, eating carcinogens and all the exhaust products away from humans, which causes cancer. Um, keeps our building cleaner too, which is very nice. Um, but that that in a nutshell, it follows you till you get to the bay door, it automatically releases as you clear the bay door by a sensor. And then when we back in, we attach it at the bay door and it follows it back on a track as you back there.
Yeah.
It is a filtration.
I was gonna say, can you tell us how to filter it before it exhausts out?
Oh, no.
No?
No, it just goes in the ass.
It's definitely.
I, a lot of them do.
Yeah, uh, we we do have one bid that's called a airhawk system. Uh, there's standalone venting uh boxes that hang from the ceiling that does capture some particulates in the filter system. That's one of the three that we're looking at, so I will keep that in mind when we get to that point.
Way to kind of offset some of the the effects of what we do anyway, I mean, we're doing it anyway, so it'd be nice to have a little.
Sure, sure. And I believe they might be the one we're looking, it'll work out, we're on. Um, and then you guys mentioned open house, so we're glad to have it again this year, COVID shut us down last year, we do enjoy doing it for the community. So hopefully we'll have a large attendance and have a good day. You have any questions, I'm always available, thanks for my time.
Yeah?
I'll try to be brief, uh, I just wanted to say my thoughts and prayers uh to Larry Grohlson, he's the owner of the Health Challenge, uh, he's a good man, serves in the finding commission chair. Um, and his deeds are too numerous to state. Um, very meeting, to be honest, would be such a good, such a great volunteer. Um, and I wanted to let you know, I'm thinking about him and uh, thanks, yeah.
Who else? People calls. Special negative people. I just wanna second what Chief Story said, I appreciate the kind words, especially with, you know, the negative climate with this crust country. Knowing we have your support means a lot and I like to hear it, it's a lot, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
See.
You can talk about, you can talk about that mess, you know, it was. Oh, since everybody's uh, you know, thanks, thank you. Kind of stumbled on that uh from a repair performed by a private contractor over the third time. Scrap that out, get rid of it, uh, we noticed a lot, a lot of new problems in there. Uh, severe repairs, uh, some photographs. You know, it's a kind of dangerous hole we're working in at that part now. We're gonna throw that liner through there, get that all renewed all the way through. As well as a sewer line that's connected to that runs down the alleyway uh to that surface and then Thursday, as we explained over a porch, which is not one of our personal. And then meeting with the uh engineers uh next week, and we'll be starting to talk about how to tackle our capital improvement plan to tackle all these easement stores or time period and get them online, get them, and these have issues at all.
I wanted to thank you too for doing the research um and bringing forth that um insurance program for the lives that's always as a for a homeowner to have that. And it's a legitimate company.
Yeah, that's, that's the big key. Um, now, you know, we're not really involved at all with that. Uh, we'll do a write up and get on website, social media that is a private agreement between the two. For that, um, I haven't heard any bad stories from any other cities, I put the filter out past. Uh, the only thing is sometimes people are complaining that the landscaping doesn't put back very quickly. That's minor to a sewer back in your house, so. But yeah, it's a good program, they they don't seem to have any problems, some cities advertise on their websites, others do not. Well, I will talk to the city.
I think we should advertise it and let people know it's a hell of a pandemic. And they work themselves and have this, you know, some kind of peace of mind if you have stores. Very expensive.
Yeah, it can easily be very, especially uh, you know, in these backyards and if they come up.
Let's see, uh, instructors and days.
He's like, I'm good, I'm alone, I wanna, I wanna go home, we need a phone.
I wanna um thank Tim also because on Sunday I was driving and I quickly called Ed, it was like, I think there's a water main break on a Sunday. And there was, like, all of the new kind of construction that's happening along the side, because there was um with inches of water, like inches and inches. It wasn't Sunday, it was Saturday. And uh I called Ed directly and I was like, hey, I'm going to the water department. Uh, we got a, we got a situation over here with a lot of water.
Yeah, it's been probably fifteen, seventeen years of break on that line and it was solid and that was over high. We believe probably the construction activity disturbed too much and caused a stress on whatever, we'll build a proofing.
Right. Lucky the draw that I saw it though, because I had done it the day before and I knew it wasn't full of water the day before and I was like, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's a, that's a sanctuary, we're thinking of um getting rid of that main and moving it somewhere else. Because of all the other utilities over the years that have been placed in the same area. Uh, we had to put that in a very large uh gas main that crossed over at several places. As well as a uh a renewed uh uh fiber optics line that just went in the last year or so. So it's, we're lower than all those utilities. So when they come in and put things in, we're not really considered about where where we are when they do it. However, when we have to dig, we run into those things and have to work around them just to get down to the water main. It turns a dig into hours instead of. It turns a dig into hours instead of.
Thanks for getting it.
Communications for the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor as well.
The manager?
Before I speak, I could ask the first James Finkley, if he has any, he's always the forgotten department head.
He's the quiet. Anything, James? Closure?
Well, you know, in addition to the fact that Michigan's system, its financial system is fundamentally broken and it remains so. Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, how proud I was to see our firefighters and police officers come tonight. And to, uh, show up to be recognized for the job that they do, and thank council for our passing resolutions, uh, commemorating nine eleven. I will never forget nine eleven. Uh, I was assistant city manager then when I was running a staff meeting. And there was a, a knock at the door of the staff meeting and an employee in the clerk's office said, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt the staff meeting, Ed, but your wife told me that I had to go interrupt the staff meeting and give you this message. And I still have the message at my house and it says terrorist attack. And so immediately what we did was we put on the TV, and at that point, both towers had been struck, both towers were burning. And, uh, you know, we all knew in that staff meeting that, uh, things had changed in this country. And it was, um, a horrific experience, but I want to say how proud I was of this country, how proud I was of my department heads at that time and my city personnel, because no one knew what was gonna happen and no one knew what the biggest threat was that day. Everything was up in the air and I can tell you that as best we could be, Hazel Park was ready by the end of the day. We had met with, uh, representatives of the schools, we had contacted other, uh, communities. We were in contact with federal authorities, we had already been invited or prepared to participate in briefings, and we were ready to go and assist anyone, anywhere in metro Detroit, assistance in case something happened here. Uh, in the aftermath of that, our, uh, you know, uh, all of us participated in homeland security meetings, briefing, federal government. Our police reserve unit was actually cross sworn with Wayne County and the state. Uh, federal officers control, uh, the bridge and the tunnel for border security operations. Uh, we were ready, and, uh, I'm very pleased to, uh, have, I had those fine person out service, uh, chiefs of police and, uh, fire chief, and that would have been Chief K, you are the chief of the, well, all the staff meeting watching it. And, uh, I'm sure each and every one of you have own stories, uh, about that terrible tragedy. And I'm glad that this community remembers, and I'm glad that this community supports, uh, our first responders. As a deputy sheriff myself, former deputy, uh, each and every one of those men and women who lost their lives as first responders, that did with my brothers and sisters. And, uh, I think that it's important that this, this country never forget that sacrifice. Uh, speaking of heroes, uh, Larry Burleson, uh, he's facing the health challenge, as Jeff Campbell said, uh, I want to send, uh, my thoughts and prayers for Larry and his family. What a great guy, uh, a Navy veteran, uh, just an amazing volunteer volunteer for the Lions Club. Almost every wheelchair ramp at the city of Hazel Park was, uh, constructed by Larry Burleson in the Lions Club. Uh, he ran beer tent operations at the Hazel Park Memorial Festival, uh, to the Lions Club, he ran that operation for, meant for decades. Uh, he and his wife Peggy are, uh, amazing stalwarts and, and, uh, it's just very sad. And we wish him well and we wish him a recovery. And then, uh, I want to thank Alyssa Sullivan, uh, for her assistance with, uh, the Wingate family and Mike could follow up a show up to the, uh, tree planting ceremony on Saturday. Uh, Tyler Wingate was tragically murdered a few years ago and the family wished to create a living memorial for him. So I wanted to, uh, thank Mike and Alyssa and Tom Jones and the members of D P W for what happened. And I want to let the Wingate family know, uh, that we will always remember Tyler and support justice. Thank you all very much.
Communications from the council person Sullivan?
Um, I want to, uh, again, thank the city administration for bringing forth a September eleventh resolution. Um, I do think that it's, it's important every year that we take that time out and pause and think about the sacrifices made and the way that it changed our, um, our entire country really, but also to, um, reflect on the importance of, um, our fire and police department in our everyday lives and how much they, um, really bring, uh, safety and a sense of safety to, to many people. Um, I, of course, have a soft spot for the fire department, so I appreciate you, Chief, I also appreciate our police department, Chief Google, um, but the fire department has my heart, sorry guys. Um, on, on that, I want to remind everybody, as Chief, uh, Story came up and talked about the, um, Hazel Park Fire Department has the open house coming up. Um, Saturday, uh, Sunday, October seventeenth, it's always a good time, it's super family friendly. Bring your kids out, bring your grandma out, um, bring everybody out, it is a good, good, honest, fun time. Um, and it's a great fundraiser for our, for our fire department, and our firefighters are happy to have you guys all come see what it's like. Um, I want to thank again, Melissa Schwartz and, uh, animal protection officer, Jim Thomas, for their hard work on the animal control order. Got forward tonight, we do have, uh, um, some potential amendments in the future, which I'm looking forward to doing. Um, but there was many, many hours, um, blood, sweat and tears put into this, um, and I record feeling that it will benefit our community. Um, I also want to thank the Wingate family for allowing me to assist in organizing the tree planting for Tyler. I grew up in Berkeley and now work in Hazel Park, and, um, this tragedy touched me in both of my kind of spaces of, of my life experiences, of my places I lived, so. Um, it was built in Berkeley, about a Berkeley community, and then, um, their family was here, so it was, you know, kind of a two-fold, and it just seemed kind of a natural progression that I would help, um, get that going, so huge thanks out to, uh, I, um, I encourage city manager and Tom Jones, who's D P W, they were just emphatically, um, involved in helping me get that going with the Wingate family, it was a beautiful ceremony, and thanks to Mike for coming out and joining, and that was really nice. Um, that's it, I just wanted to tell people also, um, Charlie can go, cannot make it tonight, he's in person, you know. Um, but just a reminder that, um, keep washing your hands, keep getting vaccinated, vaccines are available literally at the drop of a hat, most places have walking vaccines, they'll work for not yet vaccinated. Um, the races are going up in open economy, so please, you know, be safe, take care of yourself, take care of your friends and neighbors. Um, wash your hands, wear your mask, get vaccinated, that's it. Oh, and also a reminder, you have an election coming up in Hazel Park, remember second, don't forget to register at the web, you can register online, you can register here at Staker. And, uh, get your, get your ballot and get a vote on, remember second.
Uh, I too would like to reiterate, uh, feel sent a vote and get your vote on. Uh, I'd also, uh, like to, uh, remarks, and talk about how moved I was by tonight's review, uh, and the resolution for nine eleven, as well as reiterate my support and commitment to Chief Story and Chief Google to vote around and have, so that it was, uh, we're always happy and behind you. Uh, to the group that addressed us tonight, uh, more or less asking us to decriminalize nature, uh, very excited to, uh, look into the documents that they provide with an open and expanded mind. Uh, Officer Schwartz, um, thank you for, uh, sitting and reading through all of those administrative reports, uh, and somebody that like, moonlighted and legal-ishness, uh, I was director of the Michigan Department of Attorney General, I know how much time and energy goes into doing the research, doing that writing, and, uh, just wanted to thank you for such remarkable reports, uh, and also to, uh, Alyssa, for the animal ordinance. I remember when I moved to Hazel Park five years ago, uh, everybody knew about that local lady that was really passionate about dog breeds, and that passion, uh, has since evolved into a, I'm a city council as well as a ordinance, and I think it's really a fitting culmination, but it's not just your passion, but your talents. I mentioned during, uh, appointments that I work relatively frequently, Wayne County Land Bank, and, uh, I know that this is much more prevalent in Detroit, but, uh, like to say, you JT investment strategies and other businesses that are here to sit on properties for whatever reason and neglect basic maintenance and pose a safety hazard for residents to respectfully find another place. Lastly, uh, for G T E, I know that, uh, they sent a very, very long email, sort of talking about the amendment and the stuff that we're taking, but as somebody that works in P R, uh, with the ability to sort of see between all the.
Oh, then it was both here, um, so, uh.
So this is a P and G, uh, program. So I, uh, so missing, uh, most importantly from that email was, uh, while they're talking about the criminalist southeast, the community. There's absolutely nothing in there communicating what steps and efforts that they're specifically going to do in this part. And very, very much looking forward to a meeting to not only hold them accountable, but to actually ascertain what they're actually saying.
Yeah, and again, I just want, the, the person who would like to be meeting with us, he's just the messenger, oh, we need to send a strong, uh, respectful way, that a strong message. We're just not gonna put up with this anymore, this is enough. I mean, we, we are, we are demonstrably, us well-served in other communities on those two circuits, and they need to freeze the fact that we're as their mandate, they're obligated.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, uh, Chief Google and Officer Porter, uh, on Saturday, um, afternoon, I did a ride walk around the city with Officer Porter, and it was great, loved it. Um, like to do a nighttime one. But no, it was great, uh, he is such a great officer, uh, he knows business owners, uh, residents, way to add them as you drive it by, because if you do them, he can, he can do that stuff, so. Uh, he, he is a great asset for our community. Thank you for allowing me to do that. Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, the shirt that I am wearing tonight is in honor of, uh, Silas, Silas is, many people might know Tiffany Walters, she's the, she's our male person, uh, on the south part of Hazel Park, South, I'm out. Um, and her little guy, he's fighting leukemia, um, so I'm wearing this in honor of him, um, it was very nice that he won the T-shirts, so I just wanted to bring a little announcement and awareness to leukemia. Um, he is, he is really young, I think he's one, or.
Her breaking.
He's really little. So, um, so I just wanted to bring that point forward.
Councilman, does she have any fundraising that's going on right now, does she have anything we can post on the city?
I think, I'm sorry, I haven't.
And you get me that information and we'll make sure that we post that, and we'll try to see what we can find from this community and get some donations for them to make sure they got their sources made, you can quite explain, she's a great person.
Like she had dog treats with her and she knows like every dog on the block. Because everybody loves her, so.
So we know what we have to use that.
Yeah.
Give us the information.
I will, thank you.
Um, I want, I do want to thank the, uh, administration for bringing the resolution regarding nine eleven, two thousand and one. Um, so I want to thank our police and our fire, all our first responders and everybody that they help, and I'll put Larry Burleson in there as well. Um, just can't forget, with the nine eleven, two thousand and one, we need to remember, I mean, it's been twenty years and, uh, you're kids that graduated school that weren't born in that, this is a, it's a very different world from, um, you are. Um, anyway, it's getting darker out there earlier, so, uh, watch out for the bikes, like, with bicyclists, pedestrians, uh, schools open, watch out for kids coming to, to. Um, it'd be great to see everybody out at the fire department open house. Um, I want to thank, well, I'll thank Alyssa and all the artists, council people for incredible hard fare. It was a blast again, so great to hand it back. It was, and I always love, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I know, I got, I got.
Thank you for remi- remembering.
Well, it's, it's, so many things happened and we lose track, but, um, I'm just so happy it's back. It was, it was a blast, and the, uh, um, the artists, the vendors, you know, they seem to enjoy it and get good feedback, so I'd like to hear, uh, next time, whatever the, the season, uh, out, one.
I didn't have any synopsis because we had our meeting last night, but we have like our final, final numbers and stuff, and I promise I'll read you these.
And so, um, along with, uh, what Mike was saying with, about Silas, uh, if you love someone, tell them, if you have children, hug them and tell them to love them, and, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. I too would like to say thank you to the police, fire, for their continued, so, fight on, life, helping out, help others that need it. Making a difference in people's life. Keeping our community safe, our community is what we, we can keep our community sound, safe, keeps us resilient, keeps our resolve. We all remember nine eleven. It seemed like when that tower got hit, it, time just rose. We're all staring at the TV screen. I remember I was on the job, where's I work at the time. A little thirteen inch TV at the office. And you could see twenty technicians and office staff crowded around this TV. Trying to get a glimpse of what is actually happening. And we all felt the same. Our stomachs have dropped out, the bells have dropped, and time is just irrelevant. And we're all trying to figure out why. The big question was why? Who would attack this soil? That was the big question of the day. But then the question turned to, how many lives do we lose? How do we feel about what happened the next day? Therapy of people needed, the families that were destroyed. We all look at this, and then looking back at it, we all, you know, everything is twenty twenty in retro vision. But at the time, we all were so lost, looking for the peace somehow to make sense at all. I think that's what nine eleven represents, is how we make sense of how things have inspired through our country, through our lives, and how we look at each other. And I think that's what come out of it, and how the future is programmed for us by what our passes, as experiences are. I do want to also mention that Larry Burleson, great humanitarian of our community. And a big focal point of dedication. And I would say pretty much a, uh, embodiment of how our community is in the globalized sense, the family city. Larry was friend, was friendly to everyone, and I think that we need to commemorate him before he, uh, something happens terrible, that, you know, from what I've understood, things aren't working that well, and I'm hoping for the best outcome here. But I want him to know that he's appreciated by the city of Hazel Park more than he realizes. He's done so much for his community over the decades. And I want to make sure that we have a proclamation, a flag sent to him in his flowers. thanking him for all his selflessness, his service to our community, to helping others. How many times he's volunteered to build a wheelchair ramp, I've been out this time, he's with him doing that. Putting window, I remember years ago, we were putting windows in a bedroom, we took the whole wall out, put a giant window on. For a lady that couldn't get on a bed, she wanted to look at the backyard, she was seeing. And that was, this, you know, that just got me into a lot of the Lions Club at the time, that's how much we all helped. And I also want to say, you know, he's done so many other things, like Peggy has done a lot as well. There's a lot of good people in this community, I think we just recognize you that, that is outstanding.
No, I mean, we, and, you know, you're, you're raised by your parents, but you're also raised by a community.
Exactly.
And Larry was very much a part of that community. And, uh, you know, he's a great guy, and like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm praying hard for a miracle on this one, and, uh, I hope that, uh, it comes true soon. Because he truly has been, uh, fantastic citizens to me.
Yes, yes, I'd like to say thank you again to everyone who. Yes, yes, yes. I'd like to say thank you again to everyone that come out this. And the fine comments, the art fair went well. I thought it was great having Andy uh. Ben Levin out there. This, he made a point to be there because he wants to see everyone. He wants to see out. He wants to show people. That it's not, don't be afraid of this pandemic, but be cautious. And, and help out everyone you can. It was a great event. I think everybody wanted to get out of the house in this time of year. But uh, there's a lot of things going on in our community that's going forward. We've got some new development, building areas. Uh, we're having, you know, our home prices are up, the roads are repaired. Infrastructure, we're still focused on continuing. It's a continuous thing that we have to go through. And we're trying to make the betterment of our community the best. We want our community to be second to none. I think our fire and police are second to none in our, in our, in our surrounding area.
No, and, and you mentioned it during your comments after the resolution, but I, I wanna bring it up again. I think it's important. And that was, you mentioned Jessica Megan Wilson.
Yes.
And right after nine eleven, we had a memorial service a week after uh, nine eleven and there was a young female police officer there.
Thank you.
With her, uh, with her dress gloves on at that memorial, so proud to be a police officer. And sadly, one year later, at the one year anniversary of nine eleven, we were not just commemorating. Uh, the tragedy of nine eleven, but we were also commemorating the tragedy of passing. And uh, that night, Mike Levin and I, we were at the hospital. Uh, when Chief Peter Meyer told father, it was.
A wrenching.
A heart wrenching experience. I'll never forget, I'll never forget the phone call that I got. Uh, from a resident asking what happened. I called the police station. I got Norm Raymond from Ferndale. And uh, he was answering calls for us in his apartment. He said, yeah, he, he's out of his sense. It's bad. And then I got the call from Chief Peter Meyer right before I walked out. So we went, I came up here and then he picked me up and we zoomed over to the hospital and unfortunately we all. She didn't die. So.
She was proud to be a cop.
She was so proud to be a police officer that day and uh, you know, very sad and so remember. At least not here, it's in firefighters are heroes.
And that's the thing. That's what people, I think, miss about nine eleven, this thing. Or the. How much it is in their personality to wanna help people. Sort of police officer, if I mean, want to do. They chose that career path, so that's what they've decided to do. Is the lady that acted and not, no, they don't, they don't represent. The bad ones. There's always bad in every field out there. There's bad mechanics, there's bad firemen, there's bad. There's bad PR managers, yeah. There's bad fire repairmen, you know, there's bad dog walkers.
There's even some bad.
But I don't, it doesn't represent. They're really good acts of all the fine, upstanding professionals out there. And that's the point I think everybody needs to see.
Honestly, one thing about uh, Jessica Megan Wilson, um, as her service was uh, her last act. Saved lives.
It's a good thing.
She got a shot off, hit the guy.
So.
If she had. He would have killed more.
He would have killed more. She was a hero. She died a girl. She died a girl.
She just had such a beautiful, sweet smile.
Ain't going around anymore, it's made. I just wanna say thank you, everybody, for my help. And she'll return. Thank you.